All right, call to order the January 14th, 2014 Planning Commission meeting. We have a roll call.
Commissioner Griffin?
Here.
Commissioner Clifford?
Here.
Commissioner Coffer?
Here.
Commissioner Simpson?
Here.
Commissioner Carey?
Here.
Commissioner Cook?
Here.
Let the record show that Commissioner Walker is out.
Wonderful, thank you. Agenda review, we have, in addition to our standard business, continued public hearing, and under new business, a new public appeal hearing. Are there any changes to the agenda? No one's jumping up, I'm going to say no changes to the agenda. So, we have a consent agenda that consists of the November 26 Planning Commission minutes. Everybody had a chance to review them. Are there any corrections or additions? I have one Scrivener error on page 10 that'll turn into staff. And I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None? It is so moved. Council Liaison announcements. Mayor Middleton, greetings.
Greetings. I just would like to make sure everybody knows about the TriMet meeting Thursday night at 6:00, 6:30, and it's in here, and it has a lot to do with the future of Sherwood and what our transit will be, so it's really important if the planning, any of the commissioners can make it.
Will we do long staff announcements? Brad?
Just two. You stole my thunder on that one, but the groundbreaking for the community center was last Friday, so we'll start to see equipment potentially mobilized onto that site by the end of this month, just to give you that heads up. And the last thing I wanted to talk to you about is we moved the public hearing on the front yard setbacks from your next meeting until the first meeting in February, just to give you more time to mull over those transportation system plan updates. So as you remember, our next hearing will be the continuation of those two transportation system plan updates.
So there'll only be two hearings instead of three?
And that's the only two we're going to do that night, and then we move the third one to the February 11th.
Wonderful, thank you very much for that. All right, now we have an opportunity for community comments. This is for anybody to speak before the commission for items that are not on the agenda, and if you would like to speak to the commission tonight on this or on any item on the agenda, we ask you to fill out one of the blue cards and submit it to the commission secretary. And Jim Claus has one. And if you would provide your name and address for the record.
You have it for me, don't you?
Probably, probably at least once.
Do you need one for the hearing too? Do you need one for the public hearing?
I don't know how it gets filed.
He's the applicant.
Oh, you're the applicant, no, okay.
I don't think that's what I was going to say, I don't think you need one for that.
Okay, good.
All right, Robert James Claus, is this on? Robert James Claus, 22211 Southwest Pacific Highway. When I first started in planning school, we were cautioned about two things. They said there are policymaking bodies in a city, and there are staff functions. They are not to be mixed up. Now, the reason was what they call both intellectual corruption.
There we go.
All right, all right, we'll go ahead and start the time again, my apologies. If you would like to start again, that'd be.
Is this thing on now?
It is now, again.
That's a difficult structural controlling of things. You control... What? Now is it on?
There we go.
That's like I said, constructually controlling the message. Now, they said the reason you have to be very careful is because the minute that other thing happens, corruption creeps into the system. For reasons that are unbelievable, we have given sovereign immunity to appointed elected officials. You're chipping away at it. There's a lot of us contribute to funds to do away entirely. But as the FBI said when they were interviewing me recently about some of this thing on Langer, they said to me unless you can catch money being passed and have a photograph of it, you've got a difficult thing to go, a difficult role to pass. You give sovereign immunity to your staff and you pay for their legal defense, and incidentally, city-county pays for intentional torts. Do you know what that means? Bank robber can buy insurance ahead of time, rob the bank, and the bank gets paid by the insurance company. They actually pay for intentional acts. They start with the logic the billy clubs are carried by police, so you have to do it. So your staff's got this immunity. And then what happens, and you're going to see over and over examples now, of where your staff is structurally controlling the information you get. The minute they do that, they're making public policy. That's the whole problem that's occurred in this city. It's a whole problem Hitchcock did away with. He would let people come up here and present till they got to the core of it. Ever since we've had Barry Elster and Hammond, we have structurally shut down information, and it doesn't matter what you put in the record, you don't get an answer to it. Not until Gall came here did you even get the courtesy of a reply, you'd written a letter. You're going to see continued examples where the staff implements public policy by paring information. With the mayor here, what I'm hoping you do is you watch some and begin to get the Planning Commission in, because you put staff in a position they shouldn't be in. If I had a staff person trespass on somebody's property and lie about it, I'd fire him on the spot. That happens here, that was clever, they got away with it, they did it when you weren't watching. Mentor, listen, treat their staff that way. When they find out about it, they dismiss them. We don't. And the reason I caution you, as this goes along, you're going to find more and more public policy being set by your staff by not giving you information. It's sort of if you like, I guess if you went to Notre Dame and you ever read any literature, the sin of omission versus commission. They're equal. That's the whole thing of one of the Catholic cowboy novels, if you take the time to read it. And that's a sin of omission. You don't get the information. When the information is not given, you no longer can make a structured decision. And I think you may see, as you go along, as people push on this, but bear in mind, the primary problem is, I can't get at these people personally, because we have city-county who gives them both sovereign immunity and both, that means coverage, and defense. I can't buy that kind of insurance. The private enterprise system, as you well know, holds all of us responsible for negligence. These people intentional torts. That's exactly how they fired Middleton. They fired him, they knew what they're doing, they knew they're breaking the law, and they still had coverage. What a wonderful world it'd be to be in that world, and what a wonderful world it'd be when you have a city manager that doesn't make you not do that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any other citizens that would like to make a community comment at this time? All right, then, we have old business. And that was announced for 7:25, are we able to go ahead and proceed a little early?
It's on the agenda.
Okay, all right.
Is there estimated times?
It's an estimated time. So, we will, sorry. We, the public hearing, this is a continued hearing, I'm going to read the entire public hearing script at this time. The public hearing on SP 1303 Sherwood Industrial Park Phase 2 is called to order. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. Staff will present the staff report up to 15 minutes. Questions, if any, by the hearing body for staff. We will then open the public hearing for testimony, and the time will be limited as follows. Applicant will have 30 minutes split between presentation and rebuttal. Persons in favor of the application, four minutes each. Persons opposed to the application, four minutes. Rebuttal from the applicant will be the remainder of the 30 minutes. We will then close the public hearing. No other comments will be heard from the public or the applicants. There'll be final comments by the staff up to 15 minutes, and then questions of staff, if any, by the commission. There'll be discussion by the commission. A decision may be made by the Planning Commission at the close of the hearing, or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain. If the matter is continued to a date certain, this will be the only notice of that date you receive. If you wish to speak, please fill out one of the testimony forms and submit it to the Planning Commission secretary. The chair will recognize people who wish to speak, and any question should be addressed through the chair. When you come forward, please state your name for the record and provide your address if you would like to receive written notice of the decision. In reaching a decision on the application, the commission must consider whether the application meets the relevant approval criteria in the city's land use regulations. Those criteria are identified in the staff report. There are two copies of the staff report available in the room this evening. The testimony and evidence must address these criteria or other criteria you believe to apply to the decision. Please note, failure to raise an issue with enough detail to enable the commission, the applicant, and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issues precludes an appeal to the city council or land use board of appeals on that issue. Also, failure by the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues regarding proposed conditions of approval, again, with enough detail to allow the commission to respond to the issue, precludes an action for damages in circuit court. At this time, I would like to ask members of the commission to disclose any ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest. Indicate the nature and extent of the ex parte contact, bias, or conflict of interest, and indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. I had two people last night at a meeting that I was at ask me, you know, why I was leaving early, I said I was running home to read my planning, the rest of my planning commission packet. They asked, you know, what was that hearing? And I briefly summarized the two hearings that we were having tonight, and they made no further comment. I don't believe it'll at all affect my ability to make an impartial decision.
Are we discussing just, excuse me, the first?
The first one, the Sherwood Industrial Park, if you had any discussions with anybody regarding that. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge any Planning Commissioner members' ability to participate? Hearing none, I will ask the staff to proceed with their staff report, please, and that's Michelle tonight.
Thank you, Chair Simpson. Good evening, commissioners. My name's Michelle Miller, senior planner with the city. We were last here on November 26th, we were reviewing the Sherwood Industrial Park, and I presented a staff report to you as well, and we heard some testimony from the applicant. So, the Planning Commission began their deliberations, and there was really one primary issue outstanding with the proposed conditions of approval and information in front of the commission this evening, and that is the industrial design standards. So, to, the industrial standards are offered, some set standards that the applicant can comply with, and then there's some subjective standards that the Planning Commission can review. And in this case, the Planning Commission felt that the applicant had not quite met all of the alternative design criteria, and during deliberations, the applicant had asked for a continuance to address some of the concerns that the Planning Commission had with the design that was before them that evening. So they went back to the drawing table, so to speak, and you have that information as marked as Exhibit I in the packet of information. I prepared a memo addressing those, the changes that were made to the design, and at this time have also proposed some findings that are incorporated into, in front of you that you have that I gave you this evening, that I talked about in the memo, but is addressed more in the proposed notice of decision. So, with that, with the improvements that the applicant has made, staff feels comfortable recommending approval of the site plan, and will be able to answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Does anybody have any questions for staff before we call the applicant up? All right, I have a blue card, so whoever's the applicant's representative or representatives for this evening, you can approach, and please give your name and address for the record.
Hello, Mark Person from McKenzie, representing the applicant 1515 Southeast Water, number 100, Portland, Oregon 97124, along with Dale Poppy here to my left, project architect. The applicant, Jack Steiger, is in the audience tonight as well as Bob Thompson, architect with our, with McKenzie. As Michelle mentioned, we presented last before the holidays here, and the outstanding items were a couple of the, excuse me, alternative design criteria. And we feel with the, with Planning Commission's feedback, we were able to address those, and during the last meeting, I think we had addressed all of our questions with the, with the staff report and the conditions of approval, so we're just here to hopefully answer any questions that the Planning Commission may have at this time.
So, are there any questions for the applicant? I had one, just to confirm that the conditions, as we had gone over them over the last hearing, were, you were in agreements with, with those conditions.
Yeah, I think we just had some minor clarifications that we, I think, I believe we took care of, so.
Right, we pulled one out because it had been E4, because it had been satisfied, and adjusted the cap fee so that it was in compliance with calculation.
Correct.
Does anybody have any other questions for the applicant? All right, looks like you have quite a bit of time for rebuttal.
Ultimately, you have a package that was, that was presented, and we can go over the modifications of the building and the site, if you'd like to.
I think.
If there are questions on what was proposed as modifications.
Without jumping to deliberations, we got, we got really nice sets of plans that actually have wonderful architectural features that we can be able to discuss under deliberations, so.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, let's.
Do we have any comment cards? No?
So we have 28 minutes for rebuttal. I have no blue cards, so at this time, I would just call to see if anybody would like to testify in favor of this application. Hearing none, then I would call for anyone that would like to testify in opposition to this application. Hearing none, we have an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant with the remainder of your 28 minutes. Then, if there's no objection from the commission, we will close the public hearing and take no more public testimony. All right, are there any final comments by staff from all of the previously heard testimony in the last two minutes? All right, so, any questions, discussion from the Planning Commission in regards to this application?
No, I thought, I thought the letter from Mark was very explanatory, in great detail about what they had planned, you know, the changes they had made, the extra landscaping, the landscaping buffer being wider, I thought all of that was, you know, some of the kinds of things that we were asking for.
Staff has provided us with revised findings for the two issues that, well, the one finding, which was that they now meet the subjective design review, and I would ask that this be submitted into the record as the next exhibit available.
That would be Exhibit J?
Exhibit J, and if anybody has any other comments, I would be willing for a motion.
I just want to say, I do like the improved color scheme and how the bands break up the monotonous tilt-up walls. It looks really good.
I think that does.
A big improvement on what's out there right now.
I agree.
I also agree, definitely, the bands don't break it up, makes the building better.
Should this be a one? Great, two, let's see.
It's 1303.
I move the Sherwood Planning Commission approve the application for SP 13-03 Sherwood Industrial Park Phase 2, based on the applicant testimony, public testimony received, and the analysis findings and conditions in the staff report.
Is there a second?
Second, the motion.
Any further discussion on the application? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Enanmously passed, thank you very much, that was wonderful.
Yeah, thank you.
We did a really good job.
Okay, we need to take a three to five minute break.
Okay.
Okay, I believe I've been given the head nod that we are ready to proceed. We are now on to new business, which is a public appeal hearing on SP 1301. The appeal hearing on SP 1301, known as the Pacific Family Dental Parking Lot Edition, is called to order. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. Staff report, 15 minutes. Appellant, 30 minutes, to be split at their discretion between presentation and rebuttal. Applicant, 30 minutes. Public testimony, and this is limited to those who previously submitted written testimony on the record or verbally testified before the hearings officer, those people may appear before the commission on this matter. No one can pass their time to someone else. Proponents will be allowed four minutes each, and applicants may not also speak as proponents. Opponents will be given four minutes each. Appellant rebuttal will be the remainder of the 30 minutes from the presentation, then we will close the public hearing. Staff will have final comments, up to 15 minutes. There'll be questions of staff and discussion by body, no time limit, and a decision. Written comments are encouraged and may be submitted prior to the hearing, at the hearing, or when the record is left open after the hearing for a limited period of time. There is no length, no limit to the length of written comment that may be submitted. A decision may be made by the Planning Commission at the close of the hearing, or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain. If the matter is continued to a date certain, this will be the only notice of that date you receive. If you wish to speak, please fill out one of the testimony forms and submit it to the Planning Commission secretary. The chair will recognize those persons wishing to speak, and any question should be addressed through the chair. When you come forward, please state your name for the record. If you wish to receive a copy of the Planning Commission's decision, please state your address as well. In deciding whether to approve or deny the appeal, the commission must consider whether the land use application meets the relevant approval criteria found in the city's land use regulations. Those criteria are identified in the staff report and are available in the room this evening. The written and oral testimony must be directed toward these criteria and other criteria the person speaking believes apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue with enough detail to enable the commission, the applicant, and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issues precludes an appeal to the city council or land use board of appeals on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional, constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the commission to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. At this time, I would ask members of the commission to disclose any ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest. Please indicate the nature and extent of the ex parte contact, bias, or conflict of interest, and indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing.
I can go first.
There you go.
In regards to bias, I know both of the individuals tonight involved in the public hearing, I am friendly with both families and have been over the past several years, and interact with both of them in the, in the, in the community, as well as within a religious organization. And Dr. Doyle is my dentist, so in regards to bias, I don't, I believe that irregardless of that, my interaction with them, that I am capable of making a fair decision based on the facts that are in the, in our packet, as well as any testimony that might be presented tonight. In regards to an ex parte contact, I was at a public performance for a dance group where my daughter and Dr. Doyle's daughter were performing at the same time at Bridgeport outside in the pavilion, and when we bumped into each other, we were talking about the weather, and about the holiday, and about, he would be seeing me in January, oh, why is that so? Oh, it's my application that's being appealed. Oh, okay. And then the performance started, so we really had no substantive conversation in regards to, you know, the hearing. That's, we did, we did bump into each other, and we did discuss the fact that it was coming before the, the commission, but other than that, I have no, had no other ex parte contacts, so. And I believe I'm not going to recuse myself, I think I can make a fair decision based on the facts, so.
All right.
Also, Dr. Doyle is also my family doctor, or dentist, excuse me. Other than, other than maybe running into him periodically at a school function, a community event, I basically only see him when I'm at the dentist, which is hopefully only two times a year. So far, so good. I, we have never discussed or talked about any application, the appeal, so I feel that there, I have no reason not to remove myself from making a decision.
And I know Dr. Doyle as well, we're colleagues, and I have no bias for this application.
And as far as ex parte contact, again, at a meeting last night, I was approached and asked why I was running out early, and I said I was coming to read the materials for tonight, and again, just summarized what the hearing was, but there was no substantive conversation that would preclude me from being able to make a fair decision this evening. All right, does any member of the audience wish to challenge? Does any member of the audience wish to challenge any Planning Commission members' ability to participate? Can you check to make sure your button is, the button on the microphone is up?
222-111-SOUTHWEST. I'm going to bring up a technical point you've been bringing up in both hearings. Williamson Regional Planning Commission versus Hamilton National Bank is the first case, where the courts have said, if you're going to challenge anything based on Fifth Amendment and Fourteenth Amendment, they're both takings cases there, you need to exhaust administrative remedies and reach finality. Now, the first question is, your packet is not complete tonight. You have been told you have to go read the file.
Mr. Claus?
Now, I'm challenging this. Have you read the file? Because if you haven't read the file, then you should recuse yourself and reschedule this. Because you do not have the whole file in front of you, and you brought up over and over, any issue you bring up here has to reach, exhaust administrative remedies is the formal word, and reach finality. I'm asking, before I challenge the individuals, have you all read that file? Because it's not part of the hearing tonight.
So, you're-
Your patent kit says that if you're going to participate here tonight, you have to have read the file. He's not put the whole file in front of you.
I'm waiting for Chris's response because I've not, this is-
The entire record is available. The City, the Planning Commission is presumed to have reviewed it. It is distilled down into the staff report. It is, everything is listed in the exhibits, with the findings. What Mr. Claus is effectively arguing is the basis for an appeal, but there's no reason that the council has to, he has not stated a basis for bias or conflict of interest, so there's no reason for anyone to excuse, recuse themselves. And there's no reason for the Planning Commission not to proceed if he believes that the council is, or the Planning Commission, sorry, is not, has not properly conducted its duties as planning commissioners by reviewing the entire record. That might provide the basis for appeal, but it's not a basis for you not to proceed with the hearing tonight.
Okay, so-
So, you all recognize that if you haven't read that, and we challenge. Secondly, I don't think you can have a commercial relationship-
Have what?
-be a competitor, Clifford and Given. I don't think you can have a commercial relationship with the dentist. And I don't think you can be in competition with him and not have a conflict of interest. And I'm challenging that statement because that's exactly the merit of what we will be bringing up as we go along, is the scope and extent in which these financial ties work into the community. And they would challenge. Now, they can stay up there, but-
Madam Chair, the Planning Commissioners have stated that the nature of the relationship, that they're not biased if they feel some desire to respond to the allegation. They're certainly free to do so. But again, they have already stated for the record the nature of the relationship and that it doesn't bias their impartiality or ability to objectively review the evidence, apply that evidence to the criteria in the record.
And, now, let me go on because I appreciate Mr. Cream. You know, he can use words like "bad shit crazy", and they don't imply he's got actual malice. We'll see about that. But now, the question I'm saying here is, they can stay. I just don't believe they cannot not be biased.
Okay, well, they have stated for the record-
That's exactly what I'm saying. And he can rephrase it any way he wishes to. After all, you know, if you're politically correct in the states, you can restate it. But I still have the right to challenge it, and I am challenging it.
Okay.
The other question is, just to follow up. Person by person, can each of you say if you've reviewed the entire file or if you've just reviewed what the planning staff has given to you?
This is not the time for questioning of the Planning Commission.
Okay.
When is the time?
This is the time for the Planning Commission to ask for evidence from the audience, from the appellant, and from the applicant. The Planning Commission is not obligated to respond to questions from anybody. They are gathering evidence, not you.
All right. All right. We will now proceed with the staff report. A staff report, is it not?
Good evening, Chair Simpson and planning commission members. As you know, and as was stated in your package, the entire packet wasn't mailed to you, but it was available to you online. On page 166 is the cut sheet that tells you where everything is. It's all available, and it's been available to you since you received the information. Within the same packet, starting on page 39, is my memorandum. And tonight, I'm going to also hand out to you, what I've done is I've put together a table here, and this is right out of my memorandum, right out of the hearings officer's decision. The issue is, as I see them. I don't want to speculate that the clauses don't have more specific issues, but this is what I was able to glean from the application. And if you'll notice, and I'll hand this out to everybody, but if you'll notice, each one of the items is listed, and it's the same items that I listed in my memorandum along with the same information. And the items that are outlined in green are items I believe that the hearings officer has already addressed, and I did not feel the need to address again. The item that is not green is that the application was improperly processed as a new site plan and should have been processed as a major modification or a whole new site plan for both properties. And I would, I guess, subject to you the fact that when, for example, Target or Red Robin or somebody was to expand or, oftentimes in commercial real estate, the commercial owners will divide their property and divide their interest in that property for the purposes of financing, for the purposes of selling those individual parcels. But there is nothing in our code or anybody else's code that requires that all of those individuals cannot share the same amenities, parking, trash, access, water quality. Water quality is actually typically on an individual parcel, but all of them benefit from that. So, there's going to be an argument about whether or not this should be, have been viewed as two individual site plans. It is a site plan for this particular tax lot, and it is an expansion, a parking expansion onto this particular tax lot that we're conducting the site plan review for, for a office building that already has site plan approval. So, I, again, I subject to you that this is the information out of my staff report. The items on the blue table are going to be the items that the hearings officer listed as issues that Mr. and Mrs. Claus brought up in their testimony. And you'll see that I've also referred to where they can be found in the arguments above. Just a little background on this site. This is the site. It's located at the intersection of Handley. It's surrounded by Handley and Pacific Highway on the north. And if you, I'm going to point up here. You have to look back here. So, this is the existing site where the office building is. And this would be the proposed parking expansion. The entire property line goes like that. It's a triangle. And the applicant is proposing to remove this building to build these parking improvements because they don't have enough parking for their own needs here. And so, they're proposing to add parking. It would increase the off-street parking from 38 spaces to 73 spaces, which is within the margin of between minimum and maximum allowed in that zone. And they're well within their right to add that parking. The existing office building is 14,500 square feet, 504 square feet. We require parking to be employed based on the use of the building and the size of the building. So, for example, if it's 5,000 square feet of office, then we would require a medical office. Then it's 3.9 spaces per 1,000 square feet. So, we divide that by five, multiply it by 3.9, and get somewhere in the range of 22, 23 spaces. This shows where the applicant is proposing to obtain access. And again, if you look up here, they're proposing to actually create two driveways on the existing site to serve this. There will be no access off of Southwest Pacific Highway into that parking area at all. It's curbed. There's landscape buffer around it. And they will not be able to utilize Pacific Highway to get into or out of that parking area. The single-family residence on this site is currently being leased out, and it will be allowed to continue access in and off of Southwest Pacific Highway. There was a question about whether or not the trash enclosure, the trash enclosure is shown up here, would be allowed to be off of the site. The specific code language does not preclude a traffic, I mean, a trash enclosure from being on an adjacent parcel. Again, if I draw your attention to any other commercial development in Sherwood, you might have three or four parcels of land where they all share the same trash enclosure and share the cost of that, and it's something that's allowed. The appeal issues, again, I don't want to go through these individually. And again, I don't want to speculate that these encapsulate everything that they say. It's my own opinion of what I read in the appeal, of what the issues were. There's going to be a lot of talk about the extension of Cedar Brook Way tonight. This application, and Craig Christensen, the city, he's a professional engineer with the city, has reviewed this and looked at this along with Bob Delotti, the city engineer. This application does not preclude future extension of that right-of-way to the edge of this property. We could not, and we did not feel like we were able to, require the dedication or improvement of that right-of-way because we could not justify that there were impacts to the right-of-way. They're not increasing the size of the building or the number of uses in a manner that was going to generate additional traffic trips to that site. So, that building, if it has 10 vehicular trips coming to the site now because 10 people go to a dentist appointment at 8:00 in the morning, then at 8:00 in the morning in the future, 10 people will go to that business and get their teeth cleaned. It's no different. They're not increasing the size of the building. We discussed with ODOT, and ODOT does not require frontage improvements. And again, for the same reason, we did not believe that there was a nexus between a parking lot and the highway since they were not proposing to access the highway for that parking lot. And there's a lot of talk about, and within that appeal, saying that there are a lot of illegal uses, that it's a non-conforming site. Those are not issues that are before you tonight. They weren't issues that the hearings officer felt like he had to address. I will say that the parking lot originally was built illegally, and we had worked with the applicant since late 2012 to get this application in. And our policy at the city is, if you're working towards compliance with us, then we're going to not pursue formal citations. With that, I suppose if you have any questions about any of the information, and I'll go ahead and hand these out now. I'm available for questions. The staff recommendation would be that the planning commission find that there is no basis for reversal or repeal and affirm the hearings officer's decision by adopting the hearings officer's final order as your decision, along with his findings and the findings of those in the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kirsten passes those out. Does anybody have any questions of staff before we call the appellant up? Again, for the record, these are the items that we already have in our staff report.
Correct. They're in the record. All of those items have been addressed on the record.
All right. So, since there are no questions of staff at this time, we will call for the appellant, Mr. and Mrs. Claus. And there'll be 30 minutes of testimony, and it's to be split between presentation and rebuttal.
Make sure before this starts that thing's working. Given the record here tonight, I want to get this. We've got, you know, the computer presentation. And I want to make sure it's working before you start anything, given the fact you had the trouble you did with the mic.
Okay, absolutely.
So, I'll give her time to get that. Run through it a little bit first. I'll be right there.
Before we get started, I have a question. We have, part of the appeal is about the fees. And that's, to me, is kind of procedural things. So, can we deal with the-
That's a procedural question, as it was, about bias. It doesn't go to our testimony. We have to make a request in order to go to Luba on the fees, that there's a justification for it. Of this body, it's per code. Per the record, that's what we're making.
Okay, and I understand, and I believe the staff in their staff report mentioned that the fees are regulated by the council in their fee schedule. And so, this body does not have the ability to change or modify the fees.
But it doesn't take away our procedural requirement to question the fees here tonight in order to appeal it.
Okay, so that-
And that's part of your code, by the way.
Okay, so it's, so that's now on the record for tonight.
Yeah, so, as long as we're just talking about that, let me just go to it here. It's a little bit out of order.
There it is.
There it is, okay. So, the, as far as for the, on the appeal, the fees that we're asking for the appeal, there's several different Luba cases associated. This has to do with fees. This doesn't have to do with the appeal. Chris, are you saying that this is part of the 30 minutes?
Yes, it's part of- It's one of the appeal issues.
Okay, but it's also procedurally because we have to-
All procedural or substantive issues have to be raised as part of the appeal.
Okay. So, I'll just quickly do that. With the fees, the local final decision maker must allow a fee challenger to submit argument and evidence into the record so that Luba can perform its review function. Determining the average cost of such appeals for purposes of the ORS statute is up there. And this will all be part of the record for some kind of arithmetic calculation of the average of the set of numbers. And there's, and the point of it is, there's a limitation on the amount you can charge for a local appeal. We've been charged half of a site plan fee. There's nothing in the code, there's no backup in the fee schedule when they went through it to justify what the, you know, there's no time and materials, anything like that. So, these are just citations that we're asking for the staff to put into the record, evidence. And then, we've also got excerpts from the city council minutes that when the fee schedule was passed, I testified and said, "You can't pass this. There's no backup for what you're charging." Half of a site plan fee for an appeal fee. With Walmart, as an example, with $6,500 was the appeal fee. This one was $3,400. They're two different site plans. And it's, so, that, that's the point with the fees. We're objecting to that. So, and we're asking for an evidentiary hearing where the staff submits their, whatever they have to substantiate that fee. So, thank you for that. Here we go. So, with the Doyle site plan, and to me, this is one of those tragic circumstances. We've known the Doyles for a long time. Our property abuts them. This is completely unfortunate that we are where we are. There's a pre-existing Cedar Brook Way alignment that has been not only the topic of this, but all through this district. The next point of entry or the next point of moving that forward is with the Doyle property. And this particular site plan that's been put in,[1798.54] plan that's been put in, they've incrementally expanded, and they're only wanting to deal with that small expansion when they've really changed the entire site. Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Take a look at the extension, if you will, of Cedar Brook Way. Note, that is in. Note, further Hadley was abandoned and given to Doyle. Now, the reason I draw that to your attention, you have a question of proportionality. We're going to challenge that street that you see extending there, which is over 70 feet, right, Cedar Brook, right there. Doyle extended half of half of it, and the city is responsible for the other half. And the preferred route from there across to our property is about 200 feet. So, what you're looking at is 75 feet an acre, and you have admission of fact by learned legal counsel that is an exaction, which means you have to pay for it. He's never stated how, but you have to pay for it. And you need to note that, because part of the challenge here is question of how much you are burdening the Doils. With the gift of Hadley, the gift of that, the gift of what amounts to two-thirds of it to their property life, I don't know how you get proportionality. All right, go on.
Okay, so this is just an outline that gives you a little bit better outline of the two parcels. That pork chop is what they used to call the old Minniki alignment. Part of that was vacated and subsumed in the first property there that they built the dentist's office on. Tax Lot 2100 is where they're doing the expansion. And in the documentation that was submitted initially, the, the final markup for the Cedar Brook Professional Building was in 2006, and the, the working copy and the final is the final markup that you go through and you, the planner puts all of the conditions of approval on the, the plan copy. So, here we are there. This is the calculation that they came up with, that basically they have to have 48 spaces. They had 38 onsite, and they have 10 offsite, which are on the street, and they have to abut the property on the public right-of-way. This is the, the map, the site plan that they had. In green, you'll see the 10 spots that are offsite, the two different parking lots, 15 spaces and 23 spaces, totals up to 48 for the initial. The problem is...
Now, that is Paul Noor, the hearing examiner, that was, we discontinued his services. Noor, this is Noor's report. Now, you know, I'm going to point out another thing. You don't have to have microphones up here, so that's a bit of a problem, but if you can't pick the record up, it gives another reason to appeal. But what she's pointing out to you is this is Noor's original finding. It is conclusion of how that permit will be issued. I ask you to look very carefully at where those 10 on-street parking spaces are.
So, there, there's the markup there. The, the problem is, is that there's no parking on Cedar Brook Way. There hasn't been any parking on the Minniki section of Cedar Brook Way. All the way through the extension, there's no parking anywhere. Here's the examples. There, there's the two no-parking signs that are posted on Cedar Brook Way. This is right in front of Doyle's office, and it's, oops, right here with nine and 10. That's where you're looking at the pictures.
That's your legal parking.
Right there. So, we've got two no-parking signs. Spaces nine and 10 are in the no-parking zone, yet they're counted. There's the highlighted no-parking signs in front, that two of those were used for the original calculation. So, the point is, he's two points shy, two, two spaces shy, and this is just more, go ahead.
That means it's illegal from day one. This is not an Estable-Lag estate, which means he violated the rules. He's occupying his building illegally now. Now, this is simple, right out of their materials. Now, you're going to have a question about he said, she said. It goes on here all the time. That's factual. That's their file. That's where they took them, and they're illegal. Now, the reason I bring that up, if you take later, you will see where he's simply gone out in some trees that are supposed to develop the canopy, were bothering. Give me some, cut them down. Nothing's been done about that. Now, the question will come up here is the illegality of the parking lot which was put in. This has been going on for 17 months. Now, I'm asking you to start looking at this timeline. Illegal parking, tree cutting, gifts back to him of the abandonment of the road, paying for payment of part of his street. Those are material facts you have to look at, and you're going to see why he does not want to dedicate Cedar Brook Way, which is a collector. His supposed reason is money, but we will show in a moment that the staff has been busily trying to cover that up, and you have two councilmen here that can testify what we're going to say is in public record.
Okay, so here's the Tax Lot 21. These are the before conditions. You guys had that in your packet, showing the field that was just with vegetation, and there were trees, and there was also a yard in the front of the house. Here's the expanded gravel pad in front of the house, the gravel parking lot. Everybody acknowledges it was illegal. There's...
No, I know. Just a minute. Everyone did not acknowledge it was illegal. You must understand what is going on here. He was using that, and they are using it now. The reason the dental office stopped is because Butterfield made a mistake. I went to the sheriff's department, asked a question, and they said they would back me against the Sherwood police if they didn't close him down. That is the first time the illegal conduct and use of that parking lot stopped. Now, what do we have? We have an abandonment gift. We have part of the road paid for that is not mentioned for in your staff. You have somebody going in and doing massive illegal work with contractors we've just awarded, a stormwater over here on Columbia, and this was all done over 17 months with Pat Allen heading off the building commissioners and the building inspectors of the state, until I called them. Now, this goes to question credibility of evidence and testimony. You've got an illegally occupied building. You've got illegal construction, illegally cutting trees, graveling the yard, and you're told to believe this report. If you got that, I've got a bridge I'll sell you in San Francisco.
Okay, and so, here's just another picture of the, on the site. Here's the cutting of the trees. Obviously, they were cut because the sign was being blocked. And then you have the trees next to it showing how tall the trees were supposed to be. So, in the Sherwood Municipal Code, this section, modifications for approved site plans, one of the sections that says, "It changed to a condition of approval that was specific applied to this approval." There were changes. There was changes to the visual corridor, him cutting the trees, changes using the parking area for, from the next, the Tax Lot 2100, and then obviously the two parking spaces that were...
There's one technical question here that I brought up with Turner. Turner disagreed with me, but it doesn't matter. We got it into the record. 1927 Ambler Reilly versus the Village of Euclid, they allowed zoning below its highest of their use without Fifth Amendment taking. 1925, they followed down with Nectow versus Cambridge. It's never been turned over. It's only been added on. Nectow says, "If you want, you have to have an exception process in the code." You have an exception going on here. He does not want to dedicate the, the light. He does not want to dedicate the road. He does not want to finish the visual corridor. He will dedicate it, but not plan it. That, I maintain, is a variance. The other, I maintain, is an exception. Now, they still fall under Nectow versus Cambridge, and Turner said, "Well, you know, what you're saying is we're issuing exceptions here." Yes, you are. If you issue exceptions, you have four conditions. One, you cannot be a self-imposed hardship. Nothing could be more. Two, you cannot turn around and impact a neighbor. Two, you can't do damage to the general plan. What do you think's going on here? You're not going to finish the road, yet we've been told if we don't do cross-easements to Shannon and these people, we can't develop. But he doesn't even have to dedicate it. Making the situation worse, look at your map. You have easements on there. Now, I was hoping Galati's going to be here, because Galati pointed out to me and concedes that once those slope easements and wetlands are put in, you cannot build Cedar Brook Way until you remove them. Now, he said, "We can remove them." I said, "Good. I will call Diane Tanneguchi Dennis of Clean Water Service," and he, "No, no, 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 no. In all probability, we can move them." Oh, so I said, "You are screwing the transportation-specific plan." More or less, but we can get this changed. Sure you can.
Okay, and so, changes have been made to the original site plan. One of the option is revocation. That's the part of the code here. And part of the problem in all of this is, is that this has been dealt with in a piecemeal kind of a way, and really, both sites are engaged here. And in order to get Site 1, which is the original site, into compliance, you need Site 2. In order to take from Site 2, they have to have exclusive use of that parking lot, and they proposed putting an easement in for the...
A cross easement.
Yeah, for the exclusive use to Site, to the first site. To where?
Okay, there.
Okay, okay. And, and so, the, the point is, that all falls into the proportionality argument. You can't benefit the first parcel, bring it into compliance, and then turn around and say, "Wait a minute. We can't talk about proportionality here because we're only doing this very little thing to the second site." And, and the point is, which, which one do you want?
Do you like that slide? I can't, where's the point?
Which one?
The pointer, the slide of the site.
Okay.
Okay.
Right there.
Now, get one.
Okay.
What he's proposing to do, if you look at this, is put in a parking lot next to his parking lot and develop a cross easement. I am challenging the legitimacy of that. There must be unity of title, and it must be reciprocal. There is nothing reciprocal about this. He wants to go on that site, and his people want to go back on his site. That site cannot be used per the finding of fact of anything else. It needs to be pure deed restrictions. You can use deed restrictions and do that. You cannot use a cross easement. Now, unfortunately, your package, Brad's used the word crossover easement, and if you look, we've got the package so you understand what the American Marine Association says. That's another invented term from your staff. But the point is, what he wants to do is develop that small section, half an acre. Now, only one acre of that site is developable. The rest of it is in slope and in easement and in roads. When he is done, the site is 100% developed. Now, if he has a cross easement, he can take out Cory Platt, current user, through that parking lot by mere coming back here. That's why I want deed restrictions, exclusive use for his property. And we'll take that up because there's no unity of title or interest there.
And so, part of the point is too, is that there have been other parcels in this Cedar Brook District that have approached the staff and tried to do development. In our case, every time we've approached, we've been told that whatever we do with Cedar Brook Way, if, if we do something, it's temporary, and we have to get cross easements from the neighbors. This applicant here has been told, "You don't have to extend anything. You don't have to have any dedication. There's nothing that you have to do," which is in complete contrast to what we've done. When you look at the full amount of improvements that they've done between the two sites, I mean, it's a dental office, 14,000 square feet. It's huge. So, the, the point is, either Cedar Brook Way means something or it doesn't. And at the time of development is when, according to the, the code, that's when you're supposed to look at these things, and they're not being looked at. So, so here we are. Doyle doing his illegal things, and now he's getting his site plan and, and incrementally approving it, not having to extend it out. The Shannon property on the other side, the staff went through an entire situation with him and let, what, and just, and let him do his expansion, which didn't even come in front of the planning commission. It was deemed that that was existing non-conforming.
What we're trying to say here is ideally, we'd have no problems with Doyle.
Exactly.
But the problem is, Shannon's been able to do it. The Elks have been able to do it. That's expand their use, not change their primary buildings. Doyle is now taking it to the logical absurd. He's actually putting in a parking lot and then going out on 99W and not putting the road in at all. Now, the problem is, a line has to be drawn here because the staff has now made another one of their policy decisions. They tell us, "We have to build Cedar Brook Way and get a cross easement from Shannon. We can beat that in court, we think, and from him, but we have to challenge it first." Yet, here, 100% development is occurring at the site. You can't build the other acre. It's in slope easements, wetlands, and roads. It's 100% developed. Plus, there is massive erosion going on in the creek. ODOT's been out. Your engineer's been out. They dispute the report that Doyle has submitted by saying there's erosion between the sites. ODOT has implied they would help. There's been all kinds of people implied their help, but this is not moving forward. This is collaborative effort. I don't know if that makes any sense to you.
Yeah, and so, here's an example. One of our pre-apps, they go through, there's at the, at the bottom here, "Future street maps will be required with any land use submitted showing both the frontage road and potential connections on adjacent properties." They go through, "The applicant shall record with the county assessor crossover easement to the adjacent property to the southwest state highway frontage." So, the point that we're making is, we had a much higher threshold, and Cedar Brook Way has been integral to anything that we've tried to do development-wise. And so, here's the point, what Jim was just talking about.
There it is, right there.
How developed is Tax Lot 2100? When you start taking out the 25-foot visual corridor, the vegetative corridor, the extension of the road, the parking lot that's for the benefit of Site 1, and then the house that's pre-existing in that little bit in front that's usable, you're less than a half an acre. Well, if we're at the point right now where the staff and council is deeming it that there's no proportionality, how are you going to ever get proportionality? And so, what is the status of that Cedar Brook Way extension? In our code, we are supposed to address those things, and we're addressing it here by not addressing it, by just saying there's no proportionality, but yet we aren't even providing those concerned, including us. Brad, this isn't moving forward.
It's not moving forward.
Hold on just a second.
It's not moving forward.
Hold the time, just a second. And really, the, there's some code sections that we're going to come, show you, that show that you have to address it. Okay, that's fine.
What do we do now?
You just say right there, I'll, just the regular.
Right here?
Ready?
And show.
You have to get rid of that menu first.
Okay, just these two keys right here. Okay. Jim, did you want to go, or you want me to?
Well, the point is, if you look at Cedar Brook Way on that map, you look at the areas that are developed now, and we're going to challenge the fact that Cory Platt is not running a construction yard out of there. We've ran photographs and logs, and he's using the parking lot. We don't really mind if anybody else could do the same thing, but for some reason, if you contribute to Mays, you can do this. Shannon got his RV parking after he did that. The Elks have put in RV parking and expanded it. This is the most expansive use and walkway. Now, there's 40 acres in that district that cannot be developed. If you can't... I wouldn't care. I wouldn't care if you gave Doyle the parking lot. What I would care about is, they must be set as public policy. So, when we come in for about the 19th time for an application, we get the same rules. If not, we're going to take this to Luba. Then, Luba, we will litigate because you're giving us no choice. What this is, is the worst form of spot zoning I've ever seen. It's just spot zoning. And if you go through your code, the code is there stopping it. Why do we have to get a cross easement, which is a reciprocal easement, to cross Shannon and cross Williams? And he comes along, and he doesn't even dedicate the right of way?
Right.
Well, it's ridiculous. Then you turn around and force proportionality with us and tell us we don't have any, in writing. And then you turn around and tell him, "Putting in a third of the road, we're putting in on three acres." And we have six. We're putting in nice and 600 to 700 feet, and we don't have proportionality. We can't get a test out of the city. What it brings this to is litigation. Nobody wants to do it, but it brings it to litigation. Now, this can be simply resolved by saying, "We've decided in the district that you don't have to complete Cedar Brook Way in order to develop 100%. Bearing in mind, with the easement churro gang tonight, you may never build Cedar Brook Way. There's no guarantee you can get them off." Now, I'm going to tell you the worst part. We said Diane Tannaguchi Dennis, Clean Water Service. She met with Joe Gaul. ODOT met, and we found out this group had allocated $40,000 to complete the alignment of Cedar Brook Way, and Gaul came, Gallotti came in with Julia Blum and tabled it. Now, it's in your file. It's in the notes. That makes it look like malice to us. He gets the $40,000 in there to design the road, save the problem, make things good with the neighbors. And Gallotti runs in and says, "No, we don't want to do it." And then they turn around and come here and say they don't have the money. Look, I don't like fighting with the neighbor. I don't really mind fighting with Neil Duthon Doyle. I don't like him. But Cory Platt, something else. I can't understand why we come to you as a commission and say, "We can't develop our property under these conditions, and you're forcing litigation." Sit down and find some way either to make it so you don't have to put in Cedar Brook Way. Make it so you can avoid some of these conditions by using your existing buildings to make a living, and we don't have a problem. But why do the Elks, Shannon, and now Doyle think he can get there when he's had as much favorable treatment? And I want you to bear something in mind. This offer, and what turned out, would be very questionable grounds. With the double-insecurities coming, with my wife were going to prosecute her. They were going to take her right to court. Read the records. If she wrote a letter, this smart-ass judge told her, "I'll slap you around, lady. You don't fight back." He's been there for 17 months with that illegal site with a well-known city contractor, AKS Engineering, and nobody jumped on this until I did. If I were sitting up there, I would say, "I don't think I want to live in a city that's that political." Because that's what this is. This is political zoning. It has nothing whatsoever to do with that district. We took Opus out there on that 40 acres they wanted to buy. She sat in the meeting. Pat Allen sat in the meeting. Mays found out about it. He went to Opus and said, "Unless you go on Langley, you don't go in this town." Look, all we want to do is develop and get some development pattern. I don't want to beat up Doyle. But would you give Doyle, you're going to give us, or we litigate over it? This is just not right. Now, I'm sorry, Susie, but we're down on this presentation to the point...
We want to ask for a continuance.
Oh, yeah. We want a continuance because we know we're going to have to get in more material. But this has just turned into an absolute joke for us. We have to do a crossover easement. He gets a crossover easement that's reciprocal, not deed restrictions. So, what happens, as an example, if he abandons that parking lot? Does his building become illegal? Well, not according to over here because you can issue an illegal set of building permits in the first place, apparently. So, I don't know if I'm making myself at all clear, but with this kind of time left, if, you know, anybody had any questions, it would be very profitable if somebody would start asking because there are alternatives here, but not in 30 minutes. They will probably occur in mediation in federal court. Because we just can't put up with this anymore.
Do you want to reserve the rest of the time?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, if anybody has any questions, if not, let them come out. I'm surprised nobody's asking. What is it you really want?
Okay. So, you're reserving your time for the rebuttal?
Hmm. I hope it's more than that, but I think apparently it's not because I'm not sure if you're getting what we're saying. Nobody has any objection. It's the procedural process of three people behaving to get this the minute they back Mays, or the minute they're not a pain in the ass to the Langleys. And I'm going to tell you something. That's going to bite you.
Okay. So, we are definitely requesting a continuance and reserving the rest of the time.
You got the continuance request, right?
I've noted that you've requested. I will find, we've already had the first evidentiary hearing. I'm not sure how it works on appeal because it's our first, my first time through this. So, when we, before we close, we'll have at least an opportunity to find out how to...
In your notice that you read at the beginning, you said that there was...
If there was.
Okay. And there's some materials for the file, too.
While they wrap everything up, I will allow the applicant to come forward. I don't know if you have a PowerPoint or anything else you need to prepare for this. If you just give us a minute before you start your testimony.
Chair Simpson, we need to switch the tape so we could just take a minute.
Okay. And so, we're going to take a, maybe, how about a three-minute break so that some of us can change tape?
Okay. And your...
Wants to testify tonight that they complete the blue cards and turn them into the Planning Commission's secretary?
With the caveat that I think testimony is limited to persons who...
Oh, yes. And I have a list of...
Testified at the first hearing.
Individuals who provided written testimony. So, if you're on my list, that is. Are we ready?
Yes, ma'am. Sorry.
That's okay. I just wanted to make sure we were all there. Okay. So, we'll call the hearing back to order. This is now the time for the applicant. You have 30 minutes. Ty Wyman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ty Wyman here as attorney for the applicant. My address, 851 Southwest 6th Avenue, Suite 1500, Portland 97204. And I am joined tonight by the applicant, Nathan Doyle, his wife Polly, also previously referenced his expert representatives from AKS. We've got civil engineer, Monty Hurley, and professional planner, Chris Goodell. I was introduced to this case only within the last week or so. And what sits before me is roughly the record. You might be familiar with a volume of such depth. I am not, so I don't have the familiarity that AKS does with the record. I just wanted to rise to try to provide a little bit of perspective, which is, first, I've been fortunate, along with Mr. Crane, to practice land use and municipal law in this region for 20 years. I've attended countless public hearings in countless jurisdictions. And I want to tell you, express to you, that the applicant and its representatives are very well aware that you are volunteers, that we are here on your time tonight. I think Mr. Crane said it very best. Our number-one job, when you've got this kind of record before you, much of which is information from AKS, our number-one job here tonight is to address any questions that you might have about the application. Candidly, this will not surprise you very much, what you, in my estimation, what I've heard here up till now really hasn't been very much about this application. Fortunately, for me, probably for all of us, you're a very capable and experienced hearings officer, conducted a full hearing of the matter, wrote a lengthy, detailed decision. Needless to say, we're very gratified by that decision. We think that he got it right. We're not going to try to add any analysis to that. We're also gratified by the support of your staff. I'm happy to try my best to answer any questions you might have. You have your counsel here, though, as I said, I can't say much about the facts. I am going to ask because we are not presuming anything. I have asked AKS to go ahead and prepare a little presentation for you, and we've certainly got plenty of time for that. So, barring any questions on your behalf, I'm going to stand down, and I'm going to let Monty and Chris take the microphone.
Thank you, Chair Simpson, members of the Planning Commission. My name's Chris Goodell. My address is 13910 South of Galberth Drive, Suite 100, Sherwood, Oregon, 97140. With AKS Engineering, we prepared the land use application and materials for the property owner and applicant, Dr. Doyle. Brad did a great job of summarizing the project and the situation here this evening. This application's relatively simple in that you have an existing building, and the application involves creating additional parking for that building. That's the application in its essence. I think I'm going to echo what Mr. Wyman said here a few seconds ago. We appreciate staff's thorough staff report and the hearings officer's detailed decision that was provided on the application, approving the application. So, we're here this evening asking, based on the substantial evidence and the record, that you approve, excuse me, you affirm the hearings officer's decision and deny the appeal here tonight. I'm here with Monty Hurley, who's a project engineer. And as Mr. Wyman mentioned, our primary objective here is to answer any questions that you might have regarding the application, the materials, things of that matter. So, I'd like to spend the rest of our time answering questions you may have, and that's it. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions of the applicant regarding the appeal? Remembering that all documents need to be on the record. All information is on the record. We're not going to be receiving any new information or new testimony. I don't believe we have any questions.
Thank you again for your time this evening. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. So, we have opportunity for proponents, and the applicants cannot speak as proponents. Do we have anybody that testified previously that liked to speak as proponents? Hearing none. I will ask if there is anybody that would speak as an opponent that already provided testimony in the first evidentiary hearing. There are none. Then, there is an opportunity for the appellant to rebut. There are... See, appellate, like, wish to provide any further comments?
What time do you have to rebut?
The remainder of the 30 minutes, which I believe was two minutes.
Yeah, well, you're screwed up on your clock, and you've cut about half that rebutting time in half, Jean. Not that that matters, but you have. So, what I'm going to say here is, you're almost guaranteeing litigation. You are guaranteeing litigation if you pass this. We have no choice. We can't build without putting in Cedar Brook Way. We can't put without this. We can't put without that. We have destructive waste going on our property. No one denies that now. In fact, even ODOT's involved. We're asking for a study group to come out there and look at this and to come up with either a policy. The policy could be, use your existing buildings, put in accessory uses, and there is indication you've done that, and you can wait to develop until we decide what to do with Cedar Brook Way. You could also turn to the mayor and say, "Can we spend the $40,000 and lay out Cedar Brook Way right now?" You could require Doyle to dedicate it, and then he could turn around, and he's been told that it is an exaction. Doyle should get back close to $400,000 to $500,000 on what the slope easement, the wetland easement, and the road are taking. What is going to happen is, he's going to go in and get money on the slope easement and the wetland easement. Then, it can't be removed. Then, the road is stopped. Then, we will hear until we litigate that for three years, we can't build. That's not going to wash because we're not going to let it happen. And we're not going to go to district court on this. This is straight due process, 14th Amendment stuff. Nobody seems to understand, it doesn't matter how much you cooperate or try to work with people, you've always got a smart-ass attorney that grins at you to prove he's a bigger jackass as I know he is, trying to cut off your testimony. And you don't get anybody looking at the issues here. The issues here are simple. If you don't want Cedar Brook Way, take it out. Tell the staff to take it out. If you want it, take the $40,000 and design it. Pay Doyle his money for the exactions you're taking. Work with ODOT on the crossing, and then finish that district. The way you're doing it, it is simply done for a reason, that you're restraining trade so we can't compete against the urban renewal district. Barry Elsman and Hammond are a material part of that, and so is Chris Crane. And the simple, it's just that simple. Now, I don't know, there is solution here, but my guess is, it'll occur in mediation in court because nobody's even looking at this. Thank you, Jean.
Thank you. All right. That was the remainder of the 30 minutes. We are, at this time, going to close the public hearing. This is not the initial evidentiary, this is not the first evidentiary hearing. There is no requirement or obligation for us to accept a continuance. In addition, because this is an appeal, appeals in the city of Sherwood are done on the record only, so we would not even be able to accept new evidence. So, as a commission, if we choose to continue our deliberation to a future date, we could do that, but we are not obligated to keep the record open at all. So, unless I hear anything from the commission that requesting the continuation, we will go into deliberation. All right. We have a final staff report? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. A couple of things I just wanted to let you know, that if you were considering a continuation, that we are beyond the original 120 days, and the applicant has agreed, understanding that this appeal is going to be coming forward, they told the, told the 120 days by 30 days to allow us to have this appeal hearing. So, that appeal, that 30-day toll ends tomorrow at 5:00 p.m. So, if you're going to do that, you have one day. Otherwise, we need to ask the applicant to, again, toll their time. So, just give that some consideration. There were a few things I wanted to talk about that I heard. Again, I just want to reiterate that I think that all of the issues that were brought up tonight have been addressed in the hearings officer's decision. I didn't hear anything new from a staff's perspective that I haven't heard in the original record, and that wasn't considered by the hearings officer. I did hear that the abandonment of the road was a gift. And just so you know, the way that that works is, when there is a road and somebody comes in and vacates the road, half of the road goes to the property where it was originally taken from, and half of it goes back to the other property where it was originally taken from. So, it's not a gift. It was land that was originally part of those properties that was taken for public purposes, and then at some point in time, not needed anymore, and then vacated. So, it... I did hear that the abandonment of the road was a gift, and just so you know, the way that that works is when there is a road and somebody comes in and vacates the road, half of the road goes to the property where it was originally taken from, and half of it goes back to the other property where it was originally taken from. So it's, it's not a gift. It was land that was originally part of those properties that was taken for public purposes and then at some point in time not needed anymore and then vacated. So it reverted back to those properties. That's, it happens all the time. The site plan, if you look at the hearings officer's decision and in all the application materials, the site plan, application, the staff report, the site included both parcels of land. We did not try and look at one parcel of land individually. We looked at the site. With respect to the illegal uses, again, we, we have been pursuing compliance with the applicant for well over a year now, and they submitted this application back in September. And I would just say that the other items as far, the applicant has been made aware of on multiple occasions that that house is not to be used as a business. The gentleman is a contractor, and he parks his equipment there when he's home, so he does live there, and it's a house. So I suppose he hasn't come in for a home occupation permit, so until we perceive that it's acting as a business, we don't, we don't make us, we don't assume that it's acting as a business.
In regards to the site itself and in the valuation, I was trying to equate, you're looking at it based on the impact that it's going to be making, which is the parking lot itself and not the non-conforming use that's already on the site. And I was trying to equate it to anything that I've been experienced with, and I kind of was thinking of an application we had done in Old Town. I don't remember all the specifics, but I think there was a garage or something that got damaged in a storm, and when we reviewed the site plan, we looked at the garage itself and made a determination for that specific use and what that determination was. We didn't open up the entire house and the non-conforming and whatever sidewalks or other road issues were involved with the site. We just were looking at what the impact of that particular action was. And is that a fair?
That's exactly fair, and I would just add to, you know, if we were to process this as a major modification, we would be limited to the scope of that. We specifically discussed this with the applicant at the time. We wanted them to file a site plan for the entire site so that we could look at it, all the issues. And that, and that included consideration of whether or not we could require dedication of Cedar Brook Way, whether or not we could require frontage improvements out on Pacific Highway. All of those items were taken into consideration for the entire site, not just for the area of the parking lot. The bottom line is, is there's a question in their testimony as to how is proportionality defined in this respect? We look at traffic generation. We look at what a use generates, and we look at what the impacts. This is a street system. How is it going to impact that street system? By them putting this parking on this portion of that site and using the existing driveways and not adding trips to that site, to the whole site, it's the same number of people that are going to go to that dentist office tomorrow when that's done that are going there today, then we cannot find anything that would allow us to proportionally say that they've impacted that transportation system to the point that we have to further exact improvements from them or a right-of-way dedication. That's not to say the city wouldn't go through and, and negotiate for that right-of-way in the future. That's not to say that the Claws family could not come in and negotiate that right-of-way with the Doyles to get that property, to get their property served by that future extension. It is a right-of-way that is NRTSP. It is a collector status road, so if they were to buy that right-of-way and to develop that right-of-way out as a collector status road, they would get systems development, charge credits. They would get credits for their transportation development taxes towards the completion of that road.
Is it, is it fair to assume that if the non-conforming use were to be an application, that's what the trigger would be then to, because it would change the trip generation?
If, if, for example, he was to convert that to a contractor yard?
If the house became, if the non-conforming use, that part of the site were to come before the staff, that potentially, if it changes the trip generation, that would trigger the...
Another review and evaluation, and to add to that, I, there was a question of what kind of use could go there that would generate the amount of traffic that would justify that. The minimum lot size in our commercial zone is 10,000 square feet. I could very well see a Dutch Brothers or some other small coffee site going in there that's going to generate a lot of traffic and need access through Cedar Brook Way, and then that, that in and of itself would trigger those, the need for those improvements.
But, okay, so I've reviewed the record. I've looked at the hearings officer, who is a land use attorney, correct, and read all his findings, and I don't find that his findings are deficient in, in addressing any of the issues that were raised, as best as I can determine. Does any have, anybody have any other comments or questions on staff on how the application was processed or have questions regarding the findings themselves?
I don't. No, just, just clarification. I know you just, you were there to talk about. So through this property, you know, if Cedar Brook Way does get developed, who pays for this portion of the road that passes through this new development? It depends on who needs it. So, for example, if they were to come in and redevelop this portion of the site, then we could say, "And you need access to it, then you have to provide access to an improved public street." So they could dedicate the right-of-way and do a three-quarter street improvement, which is typical. One way the city could go and decide that we want to go ahead and start pursuing construction of that right-of-way, and then counsel makes it a priority to allocate funding towards that improvement. Or again, the Claws family could come, the Claws family, the Shannon family, any family that would benefit from having that right-of-way extended could come and approach Dr. Doyle about purchasing that land for the purpose of putting in the right-of-way and make the improvements. And again, it's TDT creditable improvements.
I'm looking to other commissioners to see if they have any, this document that was handed out by staff regarding those 10 items, again, reiterates and answers the questions that I believe the appellant has brought up, and I don't see where we have any different, no one's jumping up and saying deficiencies. So does anybody have concerns or ready to make a motion?
One more thing before you go into that. I just wanted to make sure that all of the information that Mr. and Mrs. Claws has submitted tonight goes down as exhibits into the record, so I'll enter those into the record.
Wait, wait, Brad, let me, let me step in there if I may. The code is clear that no new evidence can be accepted at appeal. This appeal hearing is on the record, and no new evidence can be accepted. So anything that was given to you becomes a public record, but can't be accepted, but should be rejected by the commission and not considered.
Including their PowerPoint presentation?
The PowerPoint presentation, I assume, is fine, and frankly, everybody's seen it already anyway.
And the PowerPoint was a reiteration of the document they had already submitted.
Right, right. It distilled down what was already in the appeal itself, but any additional documents, you know, pursuant to the city code cannot be accepted and considered by the Planning Commission.
Okay. So their mission, their motion shooting, any motion that they make?
Yeah, it, it would be best to have the commission, you know, an express motion that says, "We won't accept or consider the, any evidence that was presented outside of the record." And then, and then staff, Frank, I mean, you, yeah, that, that would be sufficient.
Make a good motion?
You, you ready?
Yep.
I move that the Planning Commission deny the appeal, find that there is no basis for reversal or repeal, and affirm the hearing officer's decision, and in doing so, adopt the findings within the hearing officer's final order and the staff report, excluding any additional documents or materials presented in this evening's appeal hearing.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Further discussion on the motion? Any further questions? All right. On the motion, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion pass. Thank you very much. That's it? That was the last item on the agenda. So if, are any commissioners have any announcements regarding any of their committees that they're on? All right, then with, we will adjourn then. Thank you very much.